Good evening, take two. And welcome to the monthly meeting, February 23rd, 2023, monthly meeting of the Henrico County School Board. Let's start by going over the first item on the agenda this evening, which is the approval of the agenda. Board members may have a motion, please.
I move that the school board approve the agenda for today's meeting.
Thank you, Vice Chair Atkins. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, the agenda is approved. The next item is the Pledge of Allegiance and Moment of Silence. Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair Consella, members of the board, and good evening to all of our guests and visitors. We will begin our monthly meeting, as we always do, with a pledge of allegiance, which will be followed by a moment of silence, which can be used by those in attendance for a moment of prayer reflection. So I would ask that, once we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, that you remain standing for the moment of silence. We are joined by students from Montrose Elementary School this evening who are going to lead us in the pledge, and they're making their way forward. And their principal, Dr. Cassandra Willis, will come to the podium to introduce the students who have joined us. Welcome, Montrose.
Thank you, everyone. We are very honored and excited to be here. We thought it appropriate to select our students who show their best citizenship every single day at Montrose to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Here I have Ms. Lydia, Mr. Jordan, Ms. Gianna, Mr. -- two Jordans, Ms. Rayland, Ms. Lenaya, Ms. Malana, Mr. Marley, Mr. Mark, Ms. Zoya, Mr. Wayland, and Ms. Andrea. We present to you our Montrose Mustangs.
All right. Boy, can girls turn.
Turn.
You may be seated. Thank you again to our Montrose students for leading us in the pledge. The board members and I are now going to make our way to the audience for our performance
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and guests. My name is Christopher Mosley. I'm the Education Specialist for Performing Arts. It is my pleasure to introduce, for our performance highlight this evening, the Moody Middle School Intermediate Trouble Choir, under the direction of Mr. Tim Drummond. Mr. Drummond is in his 14th year of teaching and is eighth year at Moody Middle School. Students will perform two selections, "For the Beauty of the Earth" by John Rutter and "Odd Ostra" by Jacob Navarude. Tonight, we have in attendance their proud principal, Mrs. Denise Doss, and Assistant Principals, Mr. Tim Lewis and Rhonda Bowman. We ask that you please stand at this time so that we can recognize you. All right. And now, please help me welcome to this performance stage the Moody Middle School course.
For the beauty of the earth. For the beauty of the skies. For the love which tracts. Over and around the stars. Over and around the stars. Lord of all, to be with us. This a joyful hymn of praise. For the beauty of each hour. Of the day and of the night. Hill and valley, and tree and spire. Sunny days, stars of light. Sunny days, stars of light. Lord of all, to be with us. This a joyful hymn of praise. For the joy of love. Brother, sister, marriage, child. Brother, sister, marriage, child. Friends on earth, and friends apart. Oh, gentle thoughts and words. Lord of all, to be with us. This a joyful hymn of praise. For each perfect gift of love. To our eyes so freely given. Grace is through grace and love. Your relentless heart. Our strength and power. Lord of all, to be with us. This a joyful hymn of praise. When you're tired and troubled, you have lost your way. Don't let hearts that live or shine. Though you may be weary, though you're not alone. For the stars of God, if you roam. Of vengeance, and whose love is strong. Feels so good, but God won't. He don't care if you are. Ayah shah, ayah shah. To the stars, to the stars, to the stars. Come, 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 and hold me. Your riches, your blessings, your love. The song that prospers. He don't care if you are.
Thank you again to our performers from Moody. You did an outstanding job. I know we all enjoyed that performance. Our next portion of the agenda is our recognition portion, and normally, the board would return to the dais, but I'm going to ask them to remain down here and go ahead and take your places on our stage, as you are our first recognition item in honor of School Board Good evening, board members. As Dr. Cashwell noted, February is School Board Appreciation Month. On behalf of Henrico County Public Schools' families and staff, Dr. Cashwell will be presenting you with a token of appreciation created by some of our CTE students at Glenn Allen and Freeman High Schools. Glenn Allen students, in the Materials Processing Class, taught by Bruce Timmack, constructed decorative clocks from red oak for each of you. Technical Drawing students from Douglas Freeman, taught by Mr. Stephen Gromling, designed and used a laser to burn the nameplates on each of the clocks to customize them for you. In addition to these tokens of appreciation, I'd like to read the Governor's Proclamation in your honor. School Board Appreciation Month. Whereas, school board members are elected to represent the interests of students, teachers, parents, and other stakeholders; and whereas, school boards play a vital role in ensuring that students across the Commonwealth have access to a high-quality, rigorous education and are best positioned to uphold educational excellence in Virginia's schools; and whereas, school boards are the governing bodies responsible for the oversight, success, and effectiveness of school systems across the Commonwealth; and whereas, local school board members work with parents, business, education professionals, and other community members to create the educational vision we want for our students; and whereas, these decisions affect the present and future lives of children and set direction to prepare all students to be competitive in a local, state, national, and global 21st century knowledge economy; and whereas, School Board Appreciation Month acknowledges the contributions, dedication, and service of Virginia's local school board members, now therefore I, or he, Glenn Youngkin, do hereby recognize February 2023 as School Board Appreciation Month in our Commonwealth of Virginia, and I call this observance to the attention of our citizens. Madam Chair and members of the board, we are grateful for your dedication and service to the students, families, and staff of Henrico County Public Schools. Yours is an important and sometimes thankless job, but today, we offer you our heartfelt thanks for a job extremely well done. February is also a time to honor our amazing school board clerks who served not only the board ---- who not only served the board, but our entire community. Will Kathy Harris and Tiffany Burton, board clerks, please step forward? School Board Clerk Appreciation Week was February 13th to the 17th. Tiffany and Kathy, we thank you for all that you do in service to the board, school leadership, and most importantly, our students, families, and staff. Thank you, ladies. We're usually up here, not down there for the recognition portion, so give us a moment to get back in our seats as we continue on with our next recognition item.
And I must point out that Ms. Harris had her little iPad keeping the meetin' rolling, even getting recognized.
That's right. Her clerk duties are of the utmost importance in keeping us running, and we appreciate her diligence in continuing those even while being recognized.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Cashwell, colleagues and guests, the important -- it's important to the success of a school system that our community supports everything that we do. In 2011, workforce and career development lost a huge supporter. That person was Mr. Ray Tate. Mr. Tate was a great supporter for CTE programs, not only for Henrico County, but for the state as well. He was always willing to do whatever it took to make sure our students were served, and he would speak up for CTE. He actually served on the state CTE board for a while. It's only appropriate that we recognize the winner of our Ray Tate Memorial Award in February, since February is CTE Month. And at this point in time, I would like to ask someone that I asked here under not-so-quit direct pretenses, Mr. Brandon Hinton, to please join me up front.
I was going to say, you saw the stage. You're going to have to stand here in the center while we recognize you. Turn to the camera.
You know, as we look at what we're doing in career and technical education, the new and emergency -- new and emerging technologies drive what we do, but we could not do what we do without the support of people like Brandon. And it's funny, as I'm standing here, and this is not part of my script, I happened to pick this up, who's sitting there, and --
I haven't seen this before.
You know, there was a -- Brandon, there was a while that seven nights a week, 24 hours a day, he was out making things a better place for our students and for Henrico County by helping people understand the value of the bond referendum. You know, Brandon is just one of those people that every time you ask, is there. Tonight, he didn't ask, "Why am I here?" I just said, "I need you to come because we're talking some budget stuff, and I want you to be there to support CTE." And he goes, "Sure, I'll be there." That's the kind of partner you want to move things forward for our young people. And not only does, when he asks, he looks for opportunity. He was out at our project at Regency, happened to see the drawings of our new ACE centers. Next thing you know, I'm getting a call from Jack Berry to have lunch with Brandon to talk about how we can partner with the Restaurant Association. So he's always looking for those opportunities to help move us forward. And Brandon, I've got all these nice things I could say for you about you, because the fact that you're a true believer, that you're willing to do whatever to promote CTE, being a cheerleader for CTE, but there's some people here also that I want to recognize that are here to support you, standing here behind me, and they were part of the ploy of getting you here as well. And we're honored to have Eric County Manager and Ms. O'Bannon and -- I just went blank on your first name for a second. But, you know, once again, the fact that everybody comes together in what you've done for us, and so I've also got to give you a second to talk, because --
I'm speechless, a little bit. I was, yeah. Max said he needed some help with some bond referendum, and yes, these things do look familiar, but I'm humbled. This is a community, as you all know, I have five kids, three in school. The school system is everything for this community. It goes without saying, everything we do starts and stops with what you all do as a school system. So we're just doing what's right and what's best for the community and best for my family and best for the families behind me. But the work that I did, it was a small piece of what you all did as well. I was joking with Ms. Shea earlier, how many nights did we spend together? And with all of you. And Monica Smith-Callahan, who's back here hiding, who's part of this ploy as well, but she was out just as many nights as I was, if not more. So I'm humbled by this, very humbled. I had no idea these guys were coming. I talked to John earlier, I said, "Hey, the school board's asked me to be here, I don't know why, this evening," and he's, "Oh, well, yeah, just go." But I'm honored by this. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
A photograph before you step away.
Mr. Ben.
Congratulations again, Mr. Hinton, and to all of our special visitors who came to support him, we're so thrilled to have you as well. You know, this is an incredible partnership we enjoy between Henrico County Schools and Henrico General Government, so we're incredibly grateful. All right. The next item on our agenda is our Henrico Highlight. This month, we are shining the spotlight on the students at Tuckahoe Middle School and a unique lesson that brings science and social studies together for a special election. As you watch tonight's video, I encourage you to look for the traits of our Henrico learner profile, including critical and creative thinking, communication and collaboration, and authentic student-owned learning. Take a look.
Hi, my name is Jay Casey, and I'm the second block candidate.
I'm Leal Austin, and I am the candidate for the Block Five campaign.
My name is Trip Kram, and I believe that I'm the best candidate for Governor of Virginia.
So we were working on an environmental project where we were trying -- it was like we were running for governor, and we were trying to like figure out the best way for Virginia to run on energy.
We are more dependent on electricity than we have ever been before.
And then we had our whole class kind of work together to make a plan with videos and websites.
I'm here for the environment, and I'm here for you.
And then we had a final debate with note cards and information, and we just kind of tried to get our idea across. That's why I was better than the other candidates.
By using my energy plant, we can protect the environment as well as all of us.
Each class was their entire group, so unlike a normal two, three, five-person group working on a group project, this was 30 kids working towards a common goal. They got to pick the roles that they wanted, so we had researchers, writers, video producers, web designers, and managers, and then the candidates.
But how exactly is he here for us?
Let's walk you through our new energy plant.
All five of the candidates had vastly different plans of how they were going to answer the questions of how Virginia were going to get their energy.
We are for low-pressure hydrothermal processing.
Make transportation more efficient by using oil and natural gases to power cars.
And with coal and solar energy mixed, we will never run out.
So mine was the eco-friendly one.
My team and I, the Burns Campaign, believe that wind and solar energy are the cleanest and most applicable methods of energy production.
We plan to use nuclear energy and geothermal to produce energy and heat, and then algae biomass and gasoline.
Which brings us to our other source of energy.
Geothermal energy!
We watched all the videos, and I was trying to look for someone who was for coal, but I actually ended up voting for Hatcher, because even though like he was against coal, his plan like still was good for the environment.
It definitely made me think that like, before you go into like voting, you need to like research and stuff on each candidate.
I'm Hager Cox, and I approve this message.
The culminating message I hope the kids got out of it was that this is complicated, that there's a lot of right answers. There is no the answer for every person, or every state, or every country on energy answers. And statistically, there's a good chance that some of these kids might be in the energy field at some point in their career, and this is hopefully something that's going to spark them into that little beginning of thinking about this.
Another round of applause for our fantastic students.
It looks like we certainly have some future politicians and scientists in our schools, and as you will see in this next feature, we have some amazingly talented performers as well. Students from the Henrico County Select Choir recently performed an African-American History Month concert at the Dominion Energy Center for the Performing Arts. Their moving performance and recognition of our community's diversity and rich history are the heart of Henrico. Let's watch.
We had an amazing opportunity to have 450 kids, I believe, to come to present a Black History Month concert down at the Dominion Energy Center. A great mixture of the different ensembles that are represented in all nine of our high schools throughout the county.
Part of our mission at Richmond Performing Arts Alliance is to nurture the artists of tomorrow and to provide spaces for the arts to thrive. So our goal was to support Henrico, because we're community partners with them, by providing this beautiful venue that the students could perform. On this giant stage that they probably maybe from time to time through their childhood seen, but to get to be up on that stage and perform for their parents was a pretty cool
There was so much talent on display on that stage, and what a beautiful way to celebrate African-American History Month. Madam Chair, that concludes our recognitions and highlights this evening.
Well, thank you, Dr. Cashwell. And before moving on to our next regularly scheduled agenda item, my board colleagues and I would like to recognize you. Dr. Cashwell was recently named the Superintendent of the Year for our entire region, and she is now -- And she is now in the running to become Virginia's Superintendent of the Year. We are so fortunate to have Dr. Cashwell leading Henrico County Public Schools, and we are thrilled by this much deserved recognition of your work. Your vision, commitment to our employees, student success, and community engagement are exemplary. You have navigated our school system through some challenging times, for sure, including a global pandemic. But you continue to prove yourself an effective leader with a heart of service for children. The list of accomplishments under your leadership is long, but I want to mention a few highlights. Since you joined the division in 2018, you've led the development of the Henrico Learning Profile, the creation of the HCPS Career Ladder, and called a Blue Ribbon Panel of Experts to focus specifically on school safety. You are an advocate for our students and learning opportunities that set them up for success, not only now, but in the future. You're collaborative with us as a school board, with principals and teachers and families with the common goal of making decisions and taking actions that are in the best interest of our county's young people. Moreover, you are champion of our teachers, leaders, and support staff. No challenge is too big, nor to, quote, "out of the box" for Dr. Cashwell. She even taught elementary school at the beginning of her year to help fill staffing gaps for us here in Henrico County Schools. She was also a teacher early in her career, but this year she was actually teaching class. Dr. Cashwell, we thank you for your leadership, your service, and your genuine care and compassion for others. There is no one more deserving of Region One's Superintendent of the Year honors. Congratulations.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Thank you so much. I'm very humbled and so grateful, not only for the honor, but for the board's support and the community's support. It is an incredible honor to be Superintendent of Henrico Schools. It has certainly been the highlight of my career in education, to be here and to be a part of this incredible community. Thank you.
Well, congratulations once again. Okay, so now moving on to actual items on the agenda. The next item is the reading of the mission statement. Ms. Ogborne?
Thank you. Henrico County Public Schools, an innovative leader in educational excellence, will actively engage our students in diverse educational, social, and civic learning experiences that inspire and empower them to become contributing citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. Now, the next item on the agenda is the public forum. And before we begin the public forum, it's come to my attention that we have to follow policy, of course. And we'd like to allow three minutes for public speaking tonight. So board members, if I could have a motion to have three minutes for public speaking this evening.
I move that we move public comment to be three minutes.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. May I have a second, please?
A second.
Thank you so much. So now, let me just go over the items for the public forum. This is the one time when citizens are invited to address the school board.
We need to vote.
Oh, sorry. Sorry, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Okay, so all those in favor of three minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? The ayes have it. Three minutes is approved for public speaking this evening. Thank you so much for that correction. All right, so here we go. Citizens have signed up in advance and will be given three minutes to address the school board. Speakers will be called to speak in the order in which they are signed up and may not relinquish their spot to someone else. We ask that each speaker come to the microphone and clearly state your name, and school affiliation if applicable, and the subject of your remarks before speaking. After stating your name, please place the number you were given in the cart near the podium. Speakers must present their remarks to the school board, not the audience, and may provide copies of their comments to the school board clerk. The use of obscenity or defamation is strictly prohibited and will be ruled out of order. To assist you in tracking your time to address the school board, there's a timekeeping system displaying the elapsed time on the screen. Speakers will also receive a notice from the chair when their time has expired. The school board is here today to hear from you. We will not be responding to speakers' concerns or questions during this part of the public forum, however, a Henrico staff member will follow up with each of you. Stakeholders also have the opportunity to provide written comments through an online forum in advance of this meeting. Those comments are shared with the board members prior to the meeting and posted for view in board docs. Equal consideration and attention is given to both written and in-person comments. We appreciate your attendance this evening and for providing your input. And now the first speaker is Speaker Number One. Speaker Number One. Okay. Speaker Number Two.
Testing. Okay. Good afternoon, Board. My name's Brenda Riddell. I'm a bus driver in Henrico County. I've been a bus driver for 10 years. I'm going to be talking tonight about school behavior, mainly on the school bus, student behavior. Behavior is the way that someone acts. Accountability is taking ownership as a result of your behavior. Doesn't seem like that's a priority in Henrico County. We have had a 25% increase in bad behavior since the zero tolerance policy was dropped. Behavior on the school bus has gotten totally out of hand. Let me tell you the way we handle this. Number one, we ask the student to stop doing whatever they're doing. Please behave. Of course, misbehavior can be a lot of things. It can be bullying, threatening the bus driver, threatening another student, harassment, cursing, forceful behavior to another student. And we try our best to do it on the bus, just by, you know, helping them and trying to tell them to sit down and do what's correct. If that doesn't work, we write a referral. The referral's submitted to the school. It goes all the way up to the principal. What he does with it, we don't have a clue. In some cases, we don't even know if it's red. The problem is, we don't know. The only way we can find out is to meet with the principal, and most of the time, we're not allowed to be told. One way we do know if a consequence is given to one of our students on the bus is when that child's pulled off the bus. Hallelujah to that. That helps us a lot, and thank you whatever principal decides to do that. Because now we can concentrate on getting the students with good behavior to school on time with no disruptions. There are few consequences for bad behavior. Nobody wants to hurt anybody's feelings. It's much easier to hurt one student's feelings than the other 50 that have to go through what they're going to go through to get to their home or to get to school. Riding the bus is a privilege. It's not a right. Please listen to bus drivers with your ears and your eyes. If it's going to happen on the bus, sooner or later, it's going to happen in the school. I'm going to give you a very tough example of that. In November, a bus driver was threatened by a student on the bus. The referral was written and given to the school along with a written statement of the threat. Number one. Number two, another written statement was given to the driver's supervisor regarding the threat made to that driver by a student. Number three, the bus driver also spoke to Henrico County Police Department non-emergency and gave another written statement. All of this took place in November. The student still remained on the bus. When a bus driver's threatened, the red flag for everybody. Who's next? January 20th, police recovered a loaded gun from a student's belonging in home in middle school.
Excuse me, excuse me. Your time, your time is up. Can we please have a copy of your remarks?
I think it's beneficial that you hear the rest of this. That's entirely up to you.
With policy, I do want, we do want to hear what you have to say, but in accordance with policy, we give everybody three minutes. May we have a copy of your remarks, please?
No. You're missing the best part.
Thank you very much for sharing the remarks. Speaker Number Three. Speaker Number Three. Speaker Number Four.
Good evening. My name's Pablo Lyons. So... Good evening, honorable school board members. There are two issues I would like to address this evening. Firstly, I would like to address the zero tolerance...
Excuse me, excuse me, I don't mean to interrupt. Can you come a little bit closer to the mic or speak a little bit louder, please? Thank you.
There are two issues I would like to address this evening. Firstly, I would like to address the zero tolerance policy for specific infractions at certain Highland Springs and Henrico County's public schools. At Highland Springs High School, a majority African-American high school, for example, the principal stated that his school and others has the policy that any student involved in a fight will get an automatic 10-day suspension, 10 days out of school suspension. And any other factors could be taken into account during the appeals process. This is an egregiously inequitable and backwards policy as it does not take into account of the student's disabilities, prior infractions, et cetera, before giving the maximum consequence. It also, it also does not include the various interventions and consequences prescribed in the Henrico County Public Schools Student Code of Conduct. For example, a close family member with a documented disability who attends Highland Springs High School was jumped, double-banked by three or more Henrico High School students at a Henrico High School event my family member was participating in. My family member was given an automatic 10-day suspension from Highland Springs High School, even though they were the ones that was jumped and would not encounter any of the other students since they attended Henrico High School. The family member's suspension was reduced only after the appeals process, which guarantees a de facto four-day suspension. However, the students at Henrico High School were able to attend school the next week since they do not have the one-size-fits-all 10-day suspension policy for fighting. Moreover, the policy has proven ineffective as there are still numerous fights weekly at Highland Springs High School. When I addressed this with the principal, he said that it was at his discretion to continue the policy at his school. This is where I ask your help. As stated in the 2018 Review of Equity in Parent Engagement in Special Education in Henrico County Public Schools on the Effects of Long-Term Suspensions for Students of Color and Students with Disabilities, the impacts of this disproportionately cause students' academic success. Perhaps most importantly, research evidence does not suggest that removing misbehaving students from school will improve climate, safety, or student behavior. A student's discretion, a student's discretion should be to provide multi-tiered, providing multi-tiered approach to correcting or preventing a student's behavior, including interventions or progressive discipline. We have sent you all a copy of this in your email. So we would appreciate it if you do get back with us when you can.
Thank you, thank you very much for sharing your comments with us, and thank you for coming out to public comment. The next speaker is Speaker Number Five. Speaker Number Five. And then the last speaker is Speaker Number Six.
Okay, good afternoon. My name is Chantel Lewis. And this morning, I learned one of the top, one of the topics for tonight's meeting is the development of preventative measures as it relates to protocols for the heart health of our student athletes. This topic is important to me because about six years ago, I attempted to have the protocols and policies related to heart health and our student athletes in a local middle school revised. Unfortunately, due to the school, it was unsuccessful. But tonight, I wanted to share with you all just a small amount of information that I shared then, simply because it's relevant now. First and foremost, it should be mandated that each coach must have a portable AED. That means a basketball coach and an indoor track coach during the same season, each should have a portable AED. This is a portable AED. It costs $2,500. It costs annually $300 to maintain. You change the battery pack as well as the electrode pads. The cost of one of these should not be the burden of the school board's budget, but it should be the athletic department. They should fund these as well as provide the cost for each of these. So again, with that being said, each coach and assistant coach needs to learn how to use this AED. That is very important. Henrico County Public Schools, they have an AED posted somewhere in the school. Most nurses, and this is through the research six years ago, most of the nursing staff knows where the AED is. They hold the key and the code. However, during a football game, the nurse is not around. So if a child was to collapse on the football field, that means someone has to run into the school, and this is after school, run into the school, find the AED. Hopefully, they have the key and the code. Most likely, they won't. Break the glass, pull the AED out. Hopefully, they know how to use it. Run the AED back to the football field, and by that time, that child is deceased. So again, a portable AED unit, $2,500, should be added to whatever protocol that you guys are attempting to discuss and to update. I know I would not have enough time to go through all of these measures, so I typed up some of them. Please consider what I wrote. My email address is there if you want to know more. And that's my time.
Thank you, thank you for sharing comments with us, and thank you for coming out this evening. Again, thank you to each of you who came out this evening to public forum. And then the next item on the agenda for this evening is the approval of the Recommended Annual Financial Plan for Fiscal Year 2023-2024. Board members, do you have any questions first, first of all? Okay, hearing none, then may I have a motion, please?
I move that the school board approve the recommended 2023-2024 Annual Financial Plan as presented.
Thank you, Ms. Ogborne. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Reverend Cooper. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? The ayes have it. The fiscal year 2023-2024 Recommended Annual Financial Plan has been approved. Next on the agenda is items from the superintendent, approval of consent. Board members, are there any requests to have any item broken out separately for discussion or to ask questions? Hearing none, is there a motion?
I move that the school board accept, approve, award, and/or adopt items 10.01 through 10.13 on the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Shea. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Atkins. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? The ayes have it. Agenda items 10.01 to 10.013 on the consent agenda have been approved. The next item is unfinished business. Do we have any, board members? No. The next item is new business. Do we have any new business?
Madam Chair, I would like to take a point of privilege just to share a few remarks around Black History Month and congratulatory remarks as well.
Okay.
So I want to share just a few thoughts around Black History. Black History highlights the significant contributions made to various fields such as art, music, literature, science, and technology. From the poetry of Langston Hughes, to the music of Duke Ellington, to the scientific achievements of Mae Jemison, Black History serves as a reminder of the immense talent and creativity that Black people have brought to the world. And traditional African clothing holds deep ethnic meanings. It also embodies the cultural heritage and diversity of Africa. My look today and going forward for gatherings such as board meetings like this will continue to reflect the radiance of who we are, the recognition of royalty, and the strong roots of Black people. I truly love who we are and what we represent. Greatness surrounds us, different shapes, different sizes, different colors. And with that said, that leads me into just a few congratulatory remarks. I just want to congratulate John Roth Middle School. The Dagwaz girls and boys basketball team won their championship games. Also, the football team won their championship games. And I'm not done. Congratulations to Highland Springs High School Indoor Track and Field for winning the regional championship for the fourth consecutive time in a row. So those are my remarks. Also, Henrico Virtual Academy, and Mrs. Consella, you were there if you want to share in this congratulatory remark. HBA is in year two. They had two first-place winners in the PTSA Reflection Show Your Voice Contest. Elementary student Nuyen and high school student King will now go on to the state level. And thank you to this PTSA and all of the PTSA's that participated in the Reflections Contest. Mrs. Consella was there as well congratulating students.
Yes, it was a tremendous event. Thank you for bringing that forward and recognizing it this evening. We had over, I want to say, over 130 participants last week, and they, it was nice to gather once again. The HCCPTA had not been able to have the Reflections event in person since February 2020, so it was so nice to be able to celebrate students and families in person, and it was the first time they also had a reception afterwards, so there was lots of time for visiting. So thank you for bringing that forward, Ms. Atkins. Does anyone else have any new business? Okay, so with no new business, the last item this evening is the announcement of our next meeting. The school board's next meeting will be a work session scheduled on Thursday, March 9th, 2023, at 1:00 p.m. The meeting time may be adjusted as needed. This meeting is adjourned.